Okay, good morning. We're here for Marion County Board of Commissioners Weekly Meeting. It's Wednesday, February 20, 2019. We're here in the Senator Hearing Room.
Senator?
Senator. Senator Hearing Room. As always, if you'll join us, we'll start with a Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To those of you who are in the audience and watching on TV, sorry, we're starting just a few minutes late. We usually start right on time at nine o'clock, and we got started at, I think, 9:03. The three commissioners were at a SED Core Sixth Annual Ag Breakfast out at Mount Angel this morning, and started at 7:30. Very interesting topic.
Yeah, I might interrupt. It was just getting stuff I think we needed to know, so that's why we left Commissioner Willis.
We left the Commissioner there to listen and take notes because it was really good information from several people, and Congressman Trader was going to give remarks, and we didn't want to -- we'll see him this afternoon, too, but we didn't want to miss what he had to say.
Walk out on him.
He understands. Okay, so we have nobody signed up for public comment this morning, and we'll just go right into our consent calendar.
So Chair Cameron, I make a motion to approve our consent calendar this morning. On it, in it, under Public Works, we schedule final consideration to adopt an administrative ordinance to grant zone change for ZC case 18005-J, Conson Sons LLC, and that'll be for February 27, 2019, under the Tax Office, approve an order for a property tax refund in the amount of $25,994.93 to Core Logic Commercial Real Estate Incorporated.
Okay, I'll second the motion. Any further discussion?
Nope.
Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. First action item today is to consider approval of our 2019 federal agenda, and Barb, you're going to lead us off with a few other fine visitors that we have with us today.
Yes, we are.
All right.
Get settled in here. All right, well, good morning, and for the record, Barb Young, Government Relations Manager for Marion County, and I'll have our guests introduce themselves as well.
Hi there, Kirby Garrett, CFM Strategic Communications Federal Affairs Manager.
And Michael Skipper, CFM Strategic Communications.
All right, we'll be passing the mic around here this morning.
You're going to have to use the microphone because it won't pick it up.
Yeah. It's Michael Skipper with CFM Strategic Communications.
I think we need two microphones today. That's all right. Before you today is our 2019 federal agenda for your consideration. This has both policy and grant initiatives on it that will be beneficial to the residents here of Marion County. Just to, for the viewing audience more to know, Marion County has engaged the advocacy services of CFM Strategic Communications, and they help with the development of our federal agenda, as well as they promote the county's interests in Washington, D.C. Just want to touch base a little bit on the process that we go for to put the federal agenda together. I start several weeks out, November, December, January, meeting with our department heads and elected officials to see what issues are of interest to them, what are their priorities, what's happening in their departments that we need to know about CFM, and I take those issues, they vet them from the federal perspective, looking, are there federal grants that could help with some of those issues? Are there going to be policy debates on those issues in Congress? And then I look at those and compare them to the Commissioner's priority list for the county as well, and that's how we kind of vet and focus that list and narrow it down for you to, for your consideration. Also, we've taken the federal agenda to the Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Council for the last three years for their endorsement, and last Tuesday, we took the 2019 agenda to them, and they did endorse the public safety items on the agenda. So with that, I'll turn it over to Michael and Kirby to go into a more detailed presentation on our issues for you.
Good morning. Welcome.
All right. Well, good morning, and thank you very much, Barb, for the introduction. Like we said earlier, my name's Kirby Garrett, and this is Michael Skipper. We're part of the CFM Strategic Communications Federal Affairs Team back in D.C., advocating for the county at the federal level. And before I get any further, I just wanted to thank Barb for all of your help in putting together this agenda each and every year. A lot of work goes into it, and Barb, you know, does a great job of making it an efficient process, working with the rest of your, you know, phenomenal staff here at the county and kind of collecting all the information and seeing what, you know, has a nexus with the federal government for either grant funding or policy items, and putting that into a concise federal agenda that we're looking forward to advocating this year, and especially with you, Commissioner Cameron, and Commissioner Willis in a couple of weeks for you guys to strip back to D.C. So just a quick overview of what we are going to talk about today. Before we get to the 2019 federal agenda, we just wanted to give a brief overview of some of our recent work over recent years, and especially focusing on 2018. It was a great year, a very successful year, where we were able to provide a lot of, you know, secure a lot of good grants for good grant projects back here at the county, and also make some really great progress on a few policy initiatives back through Congress. So then we'll turn to the 2019 federal agenda, run through the grant projects we'll be advocating for this year, and the policy priorities we've outlined, and then we'll take a look at the midterm election results just real briefly, how that's affected the dynamics on Capitol Hill and with the White House back in D.C., and then we'll pull out a crystal ball, look at the remainder of 2019. It's been a pretty exciting year so far already, so we'll...
And then we'll all go to Vegas when you tell me what we're going to do.
Yes, exactly. Perfect. So with that, I'll pass it over to Michael here for the next slide.
Good morning, Commissioners, and again, for the record, my name is Michael Skipper. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to you today. In the interest of everybody's time, we're going to try and keep this as brief as possible, but there is a lot of information to cover, so feel free to stop us at any point, ask us questions, or to tell us to hurry up if we're taking too long. I'm not going to go through this whole list, but this is a slide we like to show just to illustrate the history of success we've shared together over the years. Just since 2007, we've secured over $27 million in federal grants and earmarks. That is an average of two, over $2 million per year in competitive federal funding. Marion County has one, and you can see by the diversity of this list, I mean, this has gone to, this has helped initiate and complete critical public safety, transportation, criminal justice programs. So we're really proud of what we've done over, we've been working together for a really long time, we've shared a lot of success together, and we're looking forward to trying to build on that in the coming years.
I know.
Last year, however, was really, as Kirby mentioned, just a banner year for Marion County and its local partners at the federal level. Working together, we secured nearly $10 million in federal funding in 2018. That's almost a 100-to-1 return on the county's investment in federal advocacy services last year. The biggest win there was the Mill City Tiger Grant. They received $8.1 million from the U.S. Department of Transportation to repair and rehabilitate the North San Yum River Bridge, the historic pedestrian, railroad pedestrian bridge, and make a variety of street improvements throughout Mill City. This was a partnership between Mill City, Lynn County, and Marion County, but Marion County really took the lead, working with Mill City to develop the project, write the proposal, and advocate for it on the back end. So CFM worked with your team from beginning to end on this. Tiger Grants are incredibly complicated, 30-plus-page applications with benefit cost analysis and a lot of technical information required, but after it was submitted, we met directly with the U.S. Department of Transportation to advocate for the project. We coordinated with the congressional delegation for them to relay their support, not only your delegation, but also Congressman DeFazio, since part of this is in his district as well. So we are really excited to get this, I mean, Tiger Grants, they're now referred to as the Build Grant Program, but this is one of the most competitive pots of money at the federal level. Every year, they receive thousands of applications requesting billions of dollars. In this particular round, they made 41 awards nationwide, and Mill City was the only award in the state of Oregon. So it's a huge win, and we're happy, we know it's going to make a big difference on the ground in Mill City. The county also received two grants from the Department of Justice for its expansion of its law enforcement assisted diversion program. LEAD is an initiative, I think you all know well, that where law enforcement works with nonprofits and municipal governments to divert service-resistant individuals from the criminal justice system towards...
Just a little closer.
Oh, sorry. Towards case management and treatment services. That's another competitive pot of money, and they had, the Department of Justice doesn't have a lot of money to throw around, so the fact that Marion County was able to secure over two grant awards was a really big deal. And again, we worked with your team and the Sheriff's Office to edit that application, secure congressional support, and advocate for it on the back end. And then the final thing was the SRS Title III Correction. Just a quick background, prior to 2012, Marion County and other rural counties would use Secure Rural Schools Title III funding for things like patrols, equipment, and other activities to prepare for and respond to search and rescue missions. Then in 2012, the Government Accountability Office issued a report to the Forest Service saying Title III funds can only be used for response only. So that left Marion County with hundreds of thousands of dollars in the bank in Title III funds that it couldn't spend on barely anything. Meanwhile, you guys were forced to lay off sheriffs, you were forced to reduce patrols in federal forest lands and use outdated equipment while all this money was sitting in the bank that you couldn't spend it on what you needed to. To make matters worse, we were coming up on a deadline last year where all that money was going to have to be returned to the U.S. Treasury at the end of the last fiscal year, all the unused money. So despite how this was a widespread problem, and all these counties were sitting on this funding that they couldn't use, nobody was really taking the lead to try and solve this. So we decided together with the county that we were just going to take the lead. So we engaged the congressional delegation, stakeholders, working with the delegation, not just Wyden, Berkeley, and Congressman Trader, but also Congressman Walden. We were able to introduce legislation, standalone legislation in the House and Senate with language correcting this, and ultimately, we included the language in the fiscal year 18 omnibus that passed last year. So this freed up over $500,000 in funding Marion County was sitting on and prevented the county from having to return all that money to the Treasury at the end of last September. So like I said, that's a total of almost $10 million, but also what happened to, last year was, there was a two-year retroactive reauthorization to the Secure Rural Schools program that had expired a few years before. Honestly, nobody really had a, nobody really believed SRS would ever come back. People thought it was over, but this two-year extension was a, was a nice way to top off the year. We separated it because we can't really take credit for that, but the county received $1.3 million in retroactive funds for FY '17, and the numbers aren't out yet, but it should be around the same for FY '18. And then the last thing, there are still two pending grant applications you submitted in 2018 that we expect awards to be announced sometime in the next few months for landslide mitigation to North Fork Road and improvements to the North Fork Park. That's through the Federal Highways Administration.
All right, so now pivoting to the 2019 federal agenda that we've put together, we're really excited and looking forward to, you know, building off the success of 2018 and trying to, you know, continue the momentum that we have from last year. So the first items we have, I guess I should say real quickly, on the federal agenda, what we like to do is categorize things into, you know, two main categories. Your grant projects, where the county is seeking federal funds to, you know, to leverage those funds and see projects here in Marion County to completion using those federal resources, and then also your policy priorities, whether it's legislation or federal rules. So we'll get to those in a second, but first, just looking at the grant projects that we're planning to really try to pursue federal funding for this year. We're keeping a focus again on the North Canyon, or North San Yum Canyon. You know, as Michael kind of alluded to earlier, there's the federal promise that was made for $15 million through the Opel Creek Wilderness Act that was really never delivered, you know, despite the county's efforts and the state's efforts to follow through on their end of the bargain. We've made a lot of progress over the years to try to meet that threshold through things like the Tiger Grant, Tiger Grant that was received from Mill City last year, but there's still a lot of work left to do to make sure that the federal government does follow through on that promise that was made. So the first item we have here is broadband deployment. As you all know, obviously, internet access, broadband access is critical in today's world, especially for rural communities to keep up with, you know, urban areas and just for, you know, your everyday living and also business growth and economic growth. But unfortunately, throughout the canyon, there's a severe deficiency, a severe deficiency in broadband access. The fortunate thing is now is a good time for the county to be pursuing funds. You know, they had the broadband feasibility study that was just completed, which positions you guys very well with good information to try to build off of and include in an application as you're pursuing federal funds. But also, the federal government in the FY 2018 omnibus legislation that was passed in March of last year, there was $600 million that was included for a new pilot program to distribute grants and loans to rural communities to deploy broadband. There was also in the most recent spending bill that Congress just agreed to, to fund the government through the rest of fiscal year 2019, there was $550 million included in that. So it's a really good time to be trying to pursue federal funds for broadband deployment in a rural area. So when the Commissioners are back in a couple of weeks, we're looking forward to, you know, hopefully, meeting with USDA and talking through that program and seeing how the county could put together an application to compete for that funding. Also, within the canyon, looking at wastewater infrastructure, as you guys know, this is a severe inhibitor to economic growth up there, or growth of any kind, whether it's homes or businesses, and the environmental regulations and restrictions in there, like the Three Basin Rule, you know, restricts any new wastewater discharge, but also really significantly increase the price tag of deploying what's already expensive, you know, wastewater infrastructure that's needed. So there's a federal program through USDA called the Water and Wastewater Infrastructure Program that we've targeted that provides grants and loans. This is a very expensive price tag to, you know, put that infrastructure in for the whole system under the requirements of the Three Basin Rule, but it's a program that we hope the county can leverage funds for to, you know, utilize and encourage additional investment to create that infrastructure that's needed for growth in the canyon. And then lastly, within the canyon, as Michael mentioned earlier, there are two pending applications that the county has submitted to the Federal Lands Access Program for improvements in North Fork Road. We have secured letters of support for, from the congressional offices and, you know, have been advocating for those grants and are very hopeful for their success, and we look forward to continuing that with, when the Commissioners are back, meeting with the congressional delegation in a couple of weeks. Shifting now to the Aurora Airport runway expansion, so also in the fiscal year 2018 omnibus bill that was passed last year, Congress included $1 billion in supplemental funds for the airport improvement program, which was targeted towards small and rural airports that could meet certain requirements for priority projects. So the state of Oregon submitted an application for the severely needed runway expansion there, which would enable the airport to accommodate, you know, aircrafts, modern aircrafts with higher fuel loads, higher cargo loads, so the county could really leverage that unique asset that is the Aurora Airport out there, and we're very hopeful that the federal government will, will fund that application, and will continue to advocate for it. Also on the grant list, we have the housing shortage, the severe housing shortage that Marion County has here, and that's, you know, both for workforce and affordable housing, but also for low-income housing. And so we're working with the county to, you know, scan and identify all of the federal resources that, and programs that are out there that the county can be utilizing, such as Housing and Urban Development, or HUD's Continuum of Care Program, and how the county can best position itself to, you know, really compete for the funding that it needs and should be receiving from the federal government. So those are our priority grant project items that we've outlined on the federal agenda, and now shifting to the policy items. So like I said earlier, you know, these, this is legislation that Congress may be considering or the county wants Congress to consider. It's can be federal rules that, you know, agencies are looking at, you know, putting out there, or definitions, anything that's a policy priority for the county. So the first one we have here is the investment package or infrastructure spending. This is something that both presidential candidates in the 2016 election really campaigned on. It's, you know, one of the few major policy initiatives where people have a feeling there may be agreement with the president and both parties in Congress to actually move something. So we're hopeful that that will move forward with, you know, significant federal investment to address the infrastructure needs across the country. It's something that Marion County could utilize to address, you know, your needs here locally, such as, you know, grant projects that we talked about, like the wastewater infrastructure, but also things that may not necessarily meet your typical grant programs, things like the Donald interchains that we've talked about or others, so. And then also, looking at the Detroit Fish Passage, we continue to keep this at the top of the list. As you guys know, the Corps has considered some options that would, that could cause severe, long-term damage to the recreation economy up at Detroit Lake, so we've maintained continued coordinated communication with the congressional delegation, advocating that, you know, any action, any proposal that the Corps actually takes needs to recognize the importance of that economy up there in Detroit Lake and incorporate that in their proposals. And then hand-in-hand with that is the Willamette River Basin reallocation plan and the environmental studies that the Corps of Engineers and other agencies are considering. You know, obviously, water is critical to the recreation economy like I just talked about, but also the agriculture, food processing economy, and just the health and well-being of residents throughout the county. So we are advocating that, you know, any plan that the Corps or other agencies move on needs to incorporate the current needs of the county and future needs of the county and fully address those. Secure Rural Schools reauthorization, as Michael mentioned, you know, we were, there's widespread skepticism that there would be another extension, and it remains to be seen what will happen going forward, but we're advocating for, you know, an extension of this program, but also a long-term sustainable solution to, to funding for rural counties who have been impacted by the decline of the timber industry and heightened environmental regulation like Marion County has. And along with that, the SRS Title III Patrol and Equipment Fix, we were, as Michael said, extremely excited to get this passed into law last year, and it was just, it was awesome to see the congressional delegation really take up that issue on behalf of Marion County and enact that into law. Now, we're, you know, watching like a hawk to make sure that the Forest Service heaves that new statute and doesn't take any action in administering that, that would jeopardize Marion County utilizing those funds for the purpose that was intended by Congress. So then, along with that, looking at management of the ONC lands under BLM, and then also the U.S. Forest Service, National Forest Service lands, and advocating for responsible forest management solutions, and also at the agency level, making sure that they're, you know, putting out plans that are recognizing the economic needs of the county for both healthy forests and for healthy communities. Switching gears a little bit to opioid funding, we were advocating last year for landmark legislation that was passed by Congress and signed into law by the president that provides new tools and resources to communities, but there's still a need for additional funding resources for communities to combat this, this crisis. And, you know, this is one of the items that we've talked with Marion County Sheriff's Office through meetings that Barb helped facilitate, identifying needs like, like equipping officers with Narcan so they can respond to incidents involving opioids. And then lastly, on this slide, sobering center of federal recognition as medical treatment. You know, this is a vital resource that the county has been, has been working on to create and provide, that would do a lot of good and really treat the underlying issues of intoxication. But unfortunately, the federal government, on their end of things, doesn't recognize medical treatment, doesn't recognize sobering center services as medical treatment. And so even though they're realizing the benefits to programs like Medicaid with the, you know, mitigated healthcare costs, they're not contributing anything to help out with reimbursing services. So we're advocating for, you know, federal recognition of sobering center services as medical treatment. And I'll pass it over to Michael for the next slide.
So the county is supportive of efforts to restore the COPS technology program. This was an earmarked grant program that unfortunately went away with earmarks, but it provided direct funding to police departments, sheriff's departments to make technological upgrades, purchase new equipment. Currently, there's no federal funding stream for that type of thing, despite constant federal mandates for police departments to do so. So we're just, we want to see that brought back. The county wants to protect funding levels for agencies and programs, important to it, programs it's been successful in, like Tiger and Burn, and agencies like EDA that could help fund some projects, some more projects up in the canyon, some economic development projects. These next two are pretty straightforward and have been on the county's agenda before. The county wants to see the inmate and juvenile corrections exception for federal health benefits repealed. As of right now, the county cannot bill federal programs like Medicaid for health treatment for inmates before they are adjudicated, so the county is stuck with the bill, so we want to see that changed. And then waste energy technology, the county is supportive of waste energy facilities, and it wants to ensure EPA and Congress continue to recognize the long-held international standard that waste energy technology is a renewable greenhouse gas mitigation technology. And Waters of the U.S., or WOTUS, everybody's favorite topic.
Oh, yeah.
There's been a lot of action on it recently, but just a quick reminder, WOTUS is a term in the Clean Water Act to determine which bodies of water fall under federal and state permitting authority. In 2015, the Obama administration's EPA and Army Corps decided to expand that definition to include more bodies of water, which Marion County and National Association of Counties obviously found problematic. It was immediately met with lawsuits, and the whole issue has really just been a mess of lawsuits since then. When President Trump took office, he issued, within a month, he issued an executive order to instructing his EPA and Army Corps to revisit and rewrite that rule. A year later, in 2018, the EPA and Army Corps wanted to extend the implementation date of the Obama administration's rule to 2020 to give them new time, or give them more time to come up with their own definition. And just last week, the EPA and Army Corps released their new definition of Waters of the U.S. We're still working with NACO and we're working with your staff to figure out if that new definition meets all of Marion County's concerns, but as of right now, all of those previous actions I just mentioned are individually and separately and sometimes together tied up in lawsuits all across the country. So what that mean, what that does to the process is, the 2015 rule is actually in place right now in 22 states, including Oregon. In 28 states, the, the old rule from the 1980s is in place. So just the location of all these lawsuits and what it's done, there's people seeking nationwide stays, but that hasn't happened yet, so it's just, it's in a limbo process, but unfortunately, it's in effect in these 22 states, including Oregon, right now, the 2015 rule. But like I said, we're working with NACO, this is an issue, they're pushing heavily, and we're gonna, we're gonna take a deep dive into the Trump administration's new proposed rule to see if that's something Marion County wants to get behind. And then the Cascade-Ciskiyou National Monument Expansion, this is, again, something the Obama administration did while they were, while they were closing the doors and turning off the lights, they expanded the Cascade-Ciskiyou National Monument. Marion County opposed this from the start for multiple reasons and is supporting efforts to, to correct that through a couple of different ways. And then finally, the county is supportive of restoring congressionally-directed spending, or more commonly referred to as earmarks. The county believes, and I should say, they're support, you guys are supportive of restoring it for public and nonprofit projects, supported by cities and counties, but, I lost my train of thought. But yes, so, so the county thinks this is just a more effective way of distributing federal funding than it going through all these different agencies, and you have bureaucrats out on the East Coast deciding what's best for Salem, what's best for Gates, and things like that. The county has a long list of projects that don't align with a lot of these federal grant programs, and the county is excited, if they do come back, to kind of push some projects that wouldn't normally be eligible for federal funding, like the Center for Hope and Safety's Hope Plaza, the county's very supportive of. So you all may have heard, there was an election a few months ago. By now, you all know what happened. If, everybody in D.C. and most of the people on cable news were expecting some sort of blue wave leading up to the election, and depending on who you ask, it either did or didn't happen. Nobody has a real conclusion, but the, the fact is, Democrats gained 39 House seats, they took back the House for the first time since 2010, they gained seven governorships, but they did lose seats in the Senate. So that's the breakdown of the parties right now in Congress. In terms of the Oregon delegation, there was no real surprises, all of the House incumbents one-handedly. We are starting to see some of the relatively newer House Democrats start to increase some of their seniority on their respective committees, most notably, not that he's a relatively new member, but Peter DeFazio is now the chairman of the powerful House Transportation Infrastructure Committee. So in terms of what to expect in 2019, you can expect it to be interesting. We, we thought last week we were barreling down towards another government shutdown as House Democrats and President Trump were continuing to fight over funding for the border wall. Ultimately, President Trump decided to sign the remaining FY '19 appropriation bills before the deadline without the billions of dollars he wanted for wall funding, but at the same time, he declared a national emergency to allow him to shift funding around that Congress has already appropriated for other things towards the border wall. According to the Trump administration, they think they can shift around about, it's a pretty complicated process, they have to pull from a lot of different pots of money, but they think they can shift around about $8.1 billion of money towards construction of a border wall at the southern border. But as expected, it was immediately met with lawsuits. There's more coming down the road. The biggest one that's been filed right now was by the state of California and 15 other states challenging the... state of California and 15 other states challenging the constitutionality of the emergency declaration. So, it's at the very least going to be tied up in the court for months, this issue, but at least the government's funded, I guess, is the optimistic look at that. And then FY 2020 appropriations are underway. What's going to need to happen before then, before then is, House Democrats and Senate Republicans are going to have to agree on some sort of top-line spending level for 2020 and 2021, maybe 2021. As you recall, last year Mitch McConnell and Chuck Schumer came to an agreement on a two-year budget agreement for FY 18 and 19, but they need to come up with some new top-line spending levels. So, hopefully, everybody will play nice on that, but, and there's also the Mueller probe. It's kind of, it's casted a shadow over DC that everybody's kind of just ignoring because nobody knows what to expect, when to expect it. It's possible, if it is some pretty bad report, that it could turn the entire city upside down and Congress could come to a halt, or if it's nothing, then everybody moves on and everybody's friends again. So, we'll just see how that goes. And then you can expect a person in the middle there, Jerry Nadler and Adam Schiff, to continue investigating the Trump Administration and other Cabinet Secretaries, Administration officials for perceived misconduct. That man, again, down in the bottom left, Peter DeFazio, is working on an infrastructure package he expects to release later this year. There's a lot of interest among Democrats in the House to work on some sort of tax, they'll call it fix, to the, to modify or altogether replace the Republicans' tax reform package they passed last year. It's also possible with the wall, kind of out of the immigration discussion, there could be some sort of compromise on immigration reform. As we talked about a little earlier, there, it is possible we could see the return of earmarks. Republicans were the ones who eliminated them, Democrats have always been inclined to bring them back. Each day, we, there's a new Democratic Member of Congress saying, yes, we should bring them back, but to date, no concrete plan or timeline has been released. There was just a new committee started that is intended on reviewing all of the Democratic House rules and policies and guidelines, so some people think a recommendation on the re-establishment of earmarks might come out of that, but we're just going to have to wait and see. And then I know, it seems like the 2016 election is still happening, but the 2020 presidential election has begun. I think there are seven or so confirmed Democrats that have announced they are running with probably about 40 more behind them. So, it's going to be a crowded field. Some people thought there might be some person like a John Kasich or a Jeff Flake that might challenge President Trump in the primary, but it's looking less and less likely anybody's going to do that, so it should just be a, he might just have to wait and see what happens on the Democratic side and we'll go from there. But yeah, that is all, I'm not sure if Kirby has anything in closing to say, but that's all we got for you today. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak today. It's, it's really an honor to continue to help represent Marion County in Washington, DC. We really enjoy working with you and we're hopeful for some more success this year.
Thank you.
Pass the mic around. I would just like to again thank CFM for their responsiveness to Marion County and all of our needs that we need to work on with them and their effectiveness on our behalf in Washington, DC. And the whole team, Joel Rubin is another member of the team, the whole team has just been excellent for us to work with, so just wanted to add that. And with that, we'll take any questions and recommend approval of the 2019 federal agenda.
Commissioner.
Thank you. So, you may note one big deletion from our federal agenda after, I'll just say it out loud, a horribly irresponsible vote by some of the City Council in Salem. So, we'll change our focus and it's not on the list, but I want to bring it up now to put it on yours. We've had three projects in Marion County that have kind of been on our dream list for a long time and not necessarily in order, an interchange off Highway 22 at Corden Road, maybe more important than ever with all the development there and the continued congestion on Lancaster as a relief. The second that's going to come into focus is in the Brooks area, right near our garbage burner and some other activity there on Brook Lake Road. But we have one that's moving and this is the one I really want to make you aware of and it's the Donald Interchange there. It's the longest story I want to get into right now, but it got heightened legislative interest a couple of years ago and some money was put into design, they're doing an expedited planning process, interchange impact, or IAMP, whatever it is, that's being done. So, it could very quickly show up now, we're looking for funding. Affects a lot of areas, it's on I-5, which always gets federal highway attention, it's really a dangerous area and getting increased congestion from new roadways in the Newburgh area. So, I just kind of want you to watch for it. If you have some ideas, it probably ought to be on our list, I'm going to prove it as is, but it's just kind of, I think that this is something maybe we can get, get some movement on quickly.
Commissioner, I would be happy to add that to the list as, you know, as approve it with an amendment and we would add that.
I think that's a good, I think that's a good idea.
Absolutely, yeah.
Commissioner, I'm glad you brought that up, especially with Congressman DeFazio as a transportation, and I don't know when Commissioner Willis and I are going to be back there, if we're going to see, are we going to?
Yeah, we are planning to set up a meeting with, and working to set up a meeting with his staff, yeah.
Okay, great. Because we can highlight that, Barb, and put that on there. That's a good point. I thought you were going to say, we want to figure out how to build a bridge somewhere outside of Salem.
Well, I was dreaming too, I said, Brook Lake Road will just go straight west.
If there's some creative ways.
Where's my, where's my public works, oh, I need it, Brian.
Yeah.
Draw me a quick line.
Well, we probably need to add some more sewer system out that way anyway, so we just might dig once, broadband and all of it.
Anyway, maybe we can do something.
So, I had a couple of questions. One, do we know what the timing is on the airport grant, when they make a decision on that, that the state's applied for, the runway extension?
Yeah, it's a good question and FAA has kind of staggered that grant program since they have so much money available to distribute and so they've kind of sectioned it off into, you know, distributing, I think, like 250 million at a time. As far as the round that Oregon's application is in, I, do you remember when they submitted that application?
That one went in in December.
In December?
Officially, it was December.
Well, it went in before, before that, but the E-Board retroactively approved the application in December.
Right.
Yeah.
I think it went in the end of September.
Somewhere, yeah.
Yeah. So, FAA, you know, they're a very meticulous agency who, you know, is very data-driven and really likes to get into the weeds of these applications and really fully vet them. I, you know, we can get you the latest on that, but I would expect it would be probably sometime by the middle of this year that they would be trying to get awards from that round of the application process.
Yeah.
But we'll check on that.
If there's anybody we can get in front of, I know, just, we've written letters, but while we're back there, that would be helpful because that's a real critical economic base and safety, you know, we just had an accident up there a couple of weeks ago. Fortunately, nobody was hurt, but. And then, what was the other question I had? So, on the wastewater issue, we had 60 million in there, I thought the number, Barb, was 90 million for, because of the Three Basin Rule.
Correct. With the Three Basin Rule, it is closer to 90 million and we're getting ready to put together another engineering study and design to really try to hone in on those costs, but if we're able to do something around the, and maybe an amendment to the Three Basin Rule, that's closer to the 60 million mark.
And I want to recognize, I know you complimented the two gentlemen that are in front of us and Joel, and I want to recognize that too, for the years that I've been here, you've done an excellent job representing us, but I don't want to pass over you, Barb, and Danielle and all the work that this staff is doing to put us in a position, as I'm watching this, what we did last year and what we're planning on trying to do this year, how strategic we've been and Tom Hoag, since he's been on the Economic Development Team, how we're in a position to be able to do this with the studies we've invested in, the money we've used our lottery dollars for to be able to have data that allows us to go back and do this. So, it is a really good collaborative team effort and I just want to say thank you to staff and to you as well. And to John for allowing, yeah, and for John for allowing us to use the money that he holds so dearly to his pocket.
And if I could second that real quick, just on behalf of CFM, it really is a pleasure to work with you guys and your staff, just incredible back here, very hardworking, very energetic and it really, you know, to get any of this stuff done, it really requires a lot of grunt work and, you know, a lot of just creative thinking on your guys' end too, so it's a real pleasure.
Mr. Chair, since my.
Mr. Latimer, you want to say something?
Since my name was mentioned in debate.
In debate?
Whatever we're doing here.
It was a lofty, lofty compliment.
I would like to remind the Board that this is our share of the national debt. Thank you.
I thought of the same thing, I go, you know, we're getting federal dollars. No, those are the dollars that I'm sending back there that are coming back. And you, what if you said 100 per person, right, approximately?
No, that was a.
Return on, yeah, return on investment, so for what the county is investing per year on federal lobbying services, that's approximately, you know.
Oh, you were thinking of the money we pay to you.
Correct.
I was thinking of all the money we send to the feds, how much of that is coming back?
We don't get a return on that, no.
Yeah.
Mr. Latimer, I see you want to say something again.
And Mr. Chair, and now we're back to earmarks. It's a wonderful world we live in.
Not yet. But we, it is our job to make sure those dollars are coming back to Marion County and not somewhere else, so.
Right. Yeah.
So, Chair Camera, I'd make a motion that we do approve the 2019 federal agenda as presented and include, for lack of a better name, the Donald Interchange rebuild.
Okay, we have a motion and I'll second that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, good. Looking forward to seeing you a week from tomorrow. I'm coming back, I think, right? Wait, 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 no, 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 a week from Friday. We'll see you the, probably that Monday or something in there.
If I could interrupt one more time, we will have, and I tried to find out while I was here, we have a work session coming up on the Donald Interchange and perhaps Barb can see that you get sent a recording and see what the latest is.
Perfect.
Or listen in, yeah, whichever works. Okay. Gentlemen, thank you. Barb, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we will move on to Business Services. Colleen's been patiently waiting. Consider approval of a public improvement agreement with Cedar Mill Construction in the amount of $102,130 for the remodel of the Marion County Jail visitation lobby. Good morning.
Good morning. Colleen Kunchchafin's Business Services Director and I'm here with.
Kevin Burton, Construction Project Coordinator.
So, this morning, we're here to request your approval for the jail lobby remodel, public improvement agreement with Cedar Mill Construction. I'm going to hand this over to Kevin. Kevin's been working on this project since probably the day he got here, so there's, he's picked up some stuff, but he's also got this well in hand to give you some background and some information.
Morning, Kevin.
Good morning. How are you doing, Commissioners? Yeah, so I kind of inherited this project from one of our previous county employees, so I took it and ran with it. This is to protect the workers and our jail from any of the visitors that are coming there. There's not a secure entryway coming into the visitation area of the jail facility. The secure area is actually in the back part, so anybody can come into the main lobby area and create chaos. They don't come through a metal detector, there's no protection for the guards that are there full-time. This would create a secure entryway so that as they come through the main doors of our jail visitation area, that they would get screened, x-ray machine and existing metal detector would get relocated. It creates a secure barrier for the guards to be behind and allow people to come in safely, make sure that everybody that's entering our jail is unarmed and can't create harm to the public or.
So, this is, probably, I have a question, it's probably, John's probably going to have to answer this one. Do we have guards there today or will, once this is structured, are we going to be adding more security?
No, we have security there, it's just open.
Okay, the way it, the way it's handled.
Right.
Okay, good.
I will say, back in, when this first started, probably last fall, our loss control officer, safety guy, Kyle, did a security assessment with, with the sheriff and just kind of walked through and made some recommendations. That's kind of how this got started and then it got handed over to Kevin to finish up to see what that assessment resulted in and where we're at today. Some of the dollars you'll see here is because of some scope creep because they wanted almost like a lot and so we had to scale it back a little bit. We're looking at working with our contractor as well as the department to see how we can mitigate some of the costs here because the costs have increased from the original budget that we established.
So, the 102 is not the original budget?
Original budget was about 58,000 and then the department wanted a lot of extra stuff from a security standpoint. Again, Kyle and sheriff went through and tried to scale that back, handed it off to Kevin and Kevin's trying to work. We worked with the architect to try and look what it looks like and got the approval from the sheriff to move forward and talked with John about the additional budget requested.
Some of the scope creep, we have a secure barrier going from, to an elevator or back into the jail facility right now where they have to go through the metal detector. We're relocating that to the front, so then it allows that back section for children or anything else to be able to run up to the jail without protection, so we're creating a barrier wall back where the other guard station was and that'll protect any children or wandering people from being able to go back there without permission. That is a deduct alt in the bid, so we can reduce those costs. We did get pricing for that to remove that wall from the scope of work, so we can reduce that, that overall cost. That's one of the cost points we're looking at possible reduction in, but it does reduce the safety of that back section.
Okay. Commissioner, any questions?
Well, I'm just thinking, you know, we take an annual tour of the jail and I walked into that entry and looked around and I don't know why I didn't, why I didn't pick up on it, that I didn't, I didn't feel quite right as I looked back, so I can very easily see some improvements need to be made. Our tour is mostly of the jail and, you know, behind that wall itself, but it's really the whole facility that we need to care about, so I'm, I'll be in favor of this.
Yeah, me too, and Jane, I think Bruce is usually the one that takes that tour with us?
I took it with you.
This year? And you know, that isn't an area that we've looked at, the entrance. We all just walk in and then they take us.
Right.
They just take us into the administrative office and then we go tour the jail, so that might be something on our checklist next year that we.
Start at the beginning.
Start, right, yeah. Actually, the parking lot, you know, I'm thinking of when we tour restaurants, what's the outside look like, what's the entryway look like and we just kind of blew right by that, so that's a good point, Sam, yeah. All right?
All right, so Chair Camera, if I could, I'd make a movement, make a motion that we do approve the public agreement with Cedar Mill Construction, the amount of $102,130 for remodel Marion County visitation lobby.
I'll second the motion.
Marion County Jail.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kevin, thanks for your work, appreciate it.
Sure thing.
All the projects you've been working on. Consider for, under Finance, actually, we're going to open a public hearing. I'm going to open a public hearing to consider the adopting, adopting the second supplemental budget for fiscal year 2018-19. Jeff and Debbie are here this morning, welcome, good morning.
Good morning, Debbie Gregg, Budget and Grants Manager with the Finance Department.
Jeff White, Chief Financial Officer.
I am here to present the second supplemental budget request for 1819, that is, will increase by approximately 3.9 million. In accordance with local budget law, there was a public notice posted regarding this supplemental in the Statesman Journal on February 14th and copies have been available for review, both in the Board's Office and online on the county website. This supplemental budget has been reviewed by the Commissioners last week during the management update in detail, just wanted to quickly go over some more of the significant fund changes. So, the general fund is increasing approximately 1.4 million and that's to recognize some prior year tax revenues received from the Comcast settlement and also higher-than-anticipated revenues from the Chapter 5 authority forest revenues that we receive from the state of Oregon. Those funds are being allocated to the following, 47,000 to the Sheriff's Office for parole and probation demolition for that building. and probation demolition for that building, and then 1.5 million in transfers out. That's going to Central Services Fund, a portion's going to the County Fair Fund for some increased costs and expenditures in those funds, but mostly to the Capital Improvement Project Fund. There's some increase in capital outlay for that fund, some new and modified projects such as the Health and Human Services Silverton Road location, there's some improvements being made to that building, the Juvenile Administration furnishings, and also IT network redesign. The majority of the funds, however, are going to reserve for future expenditure for anticipated projects for the 1920 budget fiscal year. County School Funds is also increasing, 332,000. These are just, again, to recognize the higher revenues that we're receiving from the Chapter 530 funds, and those are being allocated to school districts. Health and Human Services Fund is increasing, 219,000. That's recognizing some additional funding from Mid Willamette Valley Acute Care Region, and that's being allocated to personnel costs and increased FTE. And then finally, Lottery and Economic Development increased 121,000, and that's just to recognize a distribution to the Oregon Garden Foundation, primarily for capital improvements in that area. I know we went over this in detail. I'd be happy to answer any questions. You have a resolution before you? I don't know if Jeff, you want to add anything?
Yes, I would add, there was a question or two brought up last week regarding Public Works capital projects. Brian Nicholas, the Public Works Director, did provide and answer those questions, and I failed to forward that to you until this morning, so likely you haven't had a chance to read that yet. Quickly, the expansion of the fuel station out there. The current one they have is small and doesn't meet DQ requirements. It's a single wall, uncontained tank, so they want to put a double tank in there that also is larger, connected to our digital system, so they can track their inventory and maintenance requirements. And they do have some anticipation of expanded use out there for other departments, as they have the capability. The other one was regarding the water tank. That is a portable water tank they're putting in, primarily regarding the fire that was out there a year or two ago. I can't quite remember when.
2016.
Thank you. They had no, not sufficient access to water, and they can't really draw from Aquifer because of the landfill, so they're putting a portable water tank to deal with those issues if they arise in the future. The email has a little more detail, some design specifications. Apologize for not getting back to you sooner.
So the water, if I remember, thanks, Jeff, the water tank is in, at Brown's Island, because we had the compost fire.
Yes.
Okay. The fuel tank is where, though? That's, is that at Brown's Island as well, or is?
Yes, that's also Brown's Island.
Okay, all right. I know, they got equipment out there that runs around. I think they're buying some new equipment too, if I remember right, in the capital outlight project, but I don't want to go into that. Questions?
No.
John, any comments?
I think there was no public comment, if I saw the empty list go by.
Right, there is no public comment.
This is really, literally, an administrative supplemental budget that's not any great significant thing, other than some of the increase in revenues from the, from the 530 funds and the Comcast settlement.
Okay, it's always easier when it's going that way.
Oh, yeah. Chair, Camera, I'd make a motion to close the public hearing and to approve the resolution concerning the second supplemental budget for fiscal year 2018 and 19.
Okay, we have a motion to close the public hearing and adopt the fiscal year 1819 second supplemental budget resolution. I'll second that motion, and any other discussion?
Nope.
Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for your good work.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Okay, that concludes our normal business. I don't have the new guy here to delegate.
I know what you're going to do. I'm ready, I'm ready.
Huh? No, I can do it.
All right.
Uh, Jane, yeah?
Was there another action item for Finance? Did you already do that?
We just did it.
Oh, okay, sorry.
So he closed the, the motion was to close the public hearing and to act on that approval.
Sorry, thank you.
Right, got it. So I'll read the calendar. We are, obviously, we are at the SED Corp Ag Breakfast this morning at 7:30. At 9 o'clock, we are here. And then 11 o'clock today, we have a BOC Chief Administrative Officers meeting at 11 o'clock here in the Silverton Conference Room. Also today, at 12:30, Jobs Council meeting, Willamette Workforce Partnership Board Room, 626 High Street, Northeast Salem. Today, at 3:30, Community Leaders Roundtable with Congressman Kirk Schrader. Location is in the Senator Hearing Room, right back here this afternoon at 3:30. Today, at 6 o'clock, Mid Willamette Valley Council of Governments Annual Meeting and Dinner at the Kaiser Community Center, 930 Shamala Road in Kaiser, and I'm excited to be there. Tomorrow, Thursday, the 21st, City of Salem, Marion County meeting, location is at the Sassy Onion, 1244 State Street, Salem. Tomorrow, Thursday, at 9:00 AM, Work Session on Rural Oregon Continuum of Care in the Silverton Conference Room here on the fifth floor. Tomorrow, or Monday on the 25th, at 8:30 in the morning, Calendar Review, Silverton Conference Room here on the fifth floor. Monday, the 25th, at 9:00 AM, Management Update, Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor. Monday at 11:00 AM, Board of Commissioners Chief Administrative Officer meeting to begin immediately following management update at 11:00. And Tuesday, the 26th, at 8:30, Community Corrections Board, Silverton Conference Room here on the fifth floor. Tuesday at 2, the 26th, at 2 o'clock, Marion County Housing Authority Regular Board Meeting here on the fifth floor. And then Wednesday, the 27th, we are back here for our weekly board session.
So, I saw your motion about the Council of Governments dinner tonight. I shouldn't tell you this beforehand, but I was actually on the Planning Committee, so if you have complaints later tonight, bring them to me. But we tried to make a concise show, and I'm very happy with that organization, just so you know.
Good.
They're doing more and more things for the county itself. Homeless comes to mind, taking those activities coordinated, but always for the services they afford to the cities in Marion County and the other two counties that are involved. So it's an organization I've been involved with for a long time, and I'm pleased with them. Tonight, we kind of say goodbye, you know, time rolls on, a couple of really good ones, Jim Fairchild, a longtime ex-mayor, councilman in the Dallas, and Bob Andrews, mayor of Newburgh.
Oh, really? Are they both retiring, or?
Yeah, they're both.
Yeah?
And I'm hoping they'll be there, actually. They've been invited specially. So it's a great opportunity to recognize people from our wider area that matter to us.
Right.
And so I'm hoping it's a quick and happy, nice dinner.
Well, I'm, I was, I know, I know. I just said that, I'm excited to be there. I'm definitely going to go and put on my best face, and have fun, and enjoy it.
I should give a compliment here to Sean O'Day, the Executive Director of the Council of Governments. I've liked it in the past, don't get me wrong, but he stepped it up a notch, and it's really humming.
Really good. I just remember, we got an award one year.
Janet got them all the time.
Janet?
Yes. Yeah, we did too, now that, I forgot that. What was that? Some cooperation thing.
Some, something.
I had to drag you along, but we tried to cooperate.
And then I think I was going this way afterwards, really late at night, and you were going that way late at night. It was the last time I was there. Maybe I was there once since then. So we had a busy week, yeah. Well, we had a day, Monday was a holiday, President's Day. This morning was, yesterday morning was, yesterday was busy. This morning was really interesting. Yesterday, we had water, and today, we had water.
I do wish I said that earlier. I wish we didn't have to leave right then.
Right.
Because they were just bringing up some points, kind of water rights and priorities that we need to be involved in. I'm going to, I got some ideas. I don't know where we're going to go with this. I've said it a year ago even, I think water is our most important issue. I was speaking primarily of the core and the dam, but.
Well, and yesterday at that meeting, I don't remember, because we all had to leave early before it was final, over the presentation on the value of water, but somebody brought up the question of storage.
Oh, I thought you'd pick up on that.
Somebody brought it up. Were you there when they brought it up?
Yeah, he's my kind of guy.
And they said, and they said, where? And I, I, I think I leaned over to Jane, and I said, just flood the Brighton Bush.
There you go.
Right, right? I mean, there's other, there's other canyons up there that you could, you could build dams, but, you know, like somebody said, you know, trying, trying to get that done is.
He used my language, that we, we let water go that seems to have no value or use during the winter and wish we had it in the summer, so why aren't we trying to figure out something? You know, last night, I attended the Extension Service and REC, I can't even say it right, meeting, and got, one of the things I've been saying, you know, we, the climate change and global warming, et cetera, at least it's been mine, and I think you've kind of agreed with me, which should scare you, but.
No.
Instead of worrying about trying to cut carbon, it has no effect on the environment, if you know it's getting hotter, you want more power and you want more water. And, and those came, have been coming up more and more, yeah.
That's where the infrastructure should go.
That, oh, but here, what I was thinking of in particular, the other point I've said, you ought to be planning for a different type of crop that deals with warmer temperatures, if that's what's happening, and it looks like it. And that was the conversation, and the first time I've heard it outside, but Oregon State's making a big effort to, through Extension, to look at crops that grow better, you know, warmer, less water, different seeds. They talk about us being similar to, like, Salinas, California, it's kind of that climate could, could be what we have in the future. And so suddenly, it's a different crop mix, still dependent on water, but I'm glad they're thinking about it.
Right, and that's what we should be, I mean, I, I, you said it's scary that I, I think we agree on this, and I've always said this, I'm not going to deny that climate's not changing, the climate's always changed. You look through history, it's always changed, but the question is, is what do we do to adapt to that? And I think that's what your point is. And we heard some of that yesterday in the agricultural industry about the technology and the water they're using, and different ways to reduce water and put it pinpointed, and, you know, they've got, you've got drones now that can tell the moisture over a field and how much water to put where, and all those things. Those are, those are really good things that we should be investing in, because we need to build more capacity, like you said, if we, if we need the water, and, and more power to keep people from overheating, right? And do those things. It was, there was somebody that, that said yesterday, even with all those projects, I didn't understand the logic, and Jane, maybe you remember it, when she was saying that even with these water projects that they've, they've put in, they haven't necessarily reduced the amount of water, and I'm thinking, well, the only way that would happen is if you increased the acreage that you were irrigating, because if you're actually using better technology.
Right.
I didn't follow it.
I may have caught a little of that, the question, I think it was this, yesterday, that because of warmer temperatures and drier summers, that the crops that traditionally aren't irrigated are being now, so, and you go around St. Paul in the spring, late spring, and they're watering the grass fields, hop yards, and Philbert's orchards, that didn't, well, hops always did, but they hadn't worried, the grass was, by the time it came to seed, they didn't really need water. Now they, now there's a key time during, again, late spring where it does.
Yeah, and then, then leaving that breakfast this morning, we were at the point, in fact, you said that one on the end, the water faucet is the scary one, and that water real, that Brent was talking about, that water reallocation is, is taking even more water from agriculture. They're going to get.
What I'm worried about is water rights preempting, I mean, municipal industrial water rights south or north of us.
Right, downriver.
Taking priority over our own communities and businesses. That's what we have to watch for.
Right.
Otherwise, it isn't scary at all.
No, water. I'm going to go, in fact, I'm going to drink some right now.
Can you conserve it for summer?
And we will adjourn.